For this regular meeting of the Page County School Board?
Mr. Painter.
Yes.
Ms. Bryant.
Yes.
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 Please pause for a minute of silence as we prepare for the meeting tonight. And for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dr. Fox, do you have any agenda changes or additions?
I do not.
Have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
I make a motion that we approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, second by Mr. Painter to approve the agenda as presented?
Mr. Painter.
Yes.
Ms. Bryant. Yes.
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 Madam Chairman, I'd like to certify that personnel matters discussed in this meeting this evening were according to Section 2.2, Yes 3711A1.
Make a motion to brief after discussing place session?
Second.
Second.
Sorry.
You're good. We have a motion by Ms. Sullivan Soot, and a second by Ms. Bryant to certify personnel matters discussed in closed session?
Yes.
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 Great, can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Make a motion to brief consent agenda?
Second. Motion by Ms. Bryant, and second by Ms. Sullivan Soot to approve the consent agenda?
Yes.
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 The May minutes are posted for review. Ms. Seacrest, you are up with monthly financials?
Um, yes, good evening, Board. You have been provided the monthly financials for May. Our expenditures and revenue were $4,23,150.99. Along with that, you do have the local match calculation, and that has been balanced with the Treasurer's Office. If you have any questions, I'll do my best to answer them.
Do you have any questions? Ms. Jeffries, nutritional services update?
Good evening, Board members. I am standing before you this evening to give you a kind of overview of this last school year and where we're headed this summer in terms of nutritional services. That's something I have to do. Yeah. Okay, thank you. So during school year 2425, when we just ended here, our total numbers of meals served. So we see we're over 100,000 breakfasts, over 200,000 lunches, almost 20,000 supper meals, and 105 snack meals. The snack meals are served only typically when we have CCLC parent engagement night. So because we serve dinner a little later or our supper meal a little later, we serve a snack in addition to that supper. So we're pleased. Of course, this is not work that I do personally. This is work that is done by my department. So I definitely want to acknowledge the hard work that the Nutritional Services staff is doing every day in our kitchens, serving breakfast, lunch, and supper daily to each of our students and at each of our schools. The next slide talks about our yearly standing for the community eligibility provision. So each year in April, we do a count of the number of students that automatically qualify for free meals based off of somebody in the household receiving SNAP, TANF, income-based Medicaid at the free rate, homeless, foster children. And then those numbers are compiled against the entire student body population for each school. And you see, we were in a very upward trend for the last four years. We did see a decrease this past year. That is something that was statewide seen as some of the COVID-era waivers for SNAP and Medicaid have changed. So our decrease again is seen statewide. That is not unique to us. But based off of that information, we will be applying to operate the community eligibility provision again for the upcoming school year. That's where all of our students are fed breakfast, lunch, and supper at no cost to them. And they do a little math behind it, and that puts us at 75.1% of our students being considered eligible for free or reduced-price meals. And so again, that's three of every four students in Page County schools this next year are going to be considered coming from a family or household that would be eligible for free or reduced-price meals. Now on to summer. So that's, you know, we looked at this past year. We're looking at what's coming up next year. So our summer food service program started a week ago on Monday. I did some math on what our numbers are, but we operate Monday through Thursday. We have 50 different stops throughout the county. We go to each stop one time a week. And we've added evening stops, one in Rileyville, one in Luray, one in Stanley, one in Shenandoah this year, which we've already seen a good participation at those evening stops. Each child gets a meal pack that includes seven breakfasts and seven lunches. In those first six days of service, so Monday through Thursday last week, Monday and Tuesday this week, we already saw 457 unique children, meaning some of them may have gotten meals twice, but 457 different children came at least once during those six days. And because it is a 14-day meal pack, or a 14-meal pack, that is, we've already served 6,664 meals in six days. So we're seeing some great success, and we're excited to see that continue to grow. And then we've got some nice pictures for you. So last year, we got the grant to wrap the meals on the bus, which is what we call our bus that we retrofitted. That's there in the center. And we also last year got a grant for the yard signs that are the meals-on-the-bus yard signs. This year, we added our second truck, which we're calling Feed Up, because it looks sort of like a FedEx truck. And Feed Up, we got a grant to get it wrapped and outfitted with the refrigerator warming unit and generator. And so, you know, we don't like to spend money when we don't have to. So we retrofitted our yard signs to like say Feed Up for the ones that have Feed Up. And Feed Up is really unique because it has a window. So it's like a real food truck. We put out the window and we pass out the meals. So this is my plug, that if you know anyone who has children 18 or under, or grandchildren, all they have to do is go to one of those 50 stops, and we will take some very basic information from them the first time, and then we will get them to get that meal pack. And they can come back each week, one time a week, all through the summer. 11 total weeks we're doing it, so we have nine and a half weeks left, so. And then the last kind of update I wanted to give you is on our blast freezer that got installed at Luray High School a few months ago. Because of our blast freezer, we actually just got allocated, or from the government, reallocated over $13,000 of money that had to be spent by June 30th specifically for produce. And so we have purchased a lot of berries and cherries that we can then freeze with our blast freezer. So that's some cherries that we pitted. Again, "we" is the, not really me. The staff, again, that staff does amazing work even throughout the summer. So they are pitting lots and lots of cherries that we're then putting in that blast freezer, and we'll be able to use them all school year next year. And had we not had that blast freezer, we would have not been eligible for this additional funding to purchase this produce. So super excited for our kids to be able to experience that as the school year comes around in the fall. And so with that, I want to remind everybody, especially Nutritional Services is very active on Instagram. It is the Page County Public Schools Instagram site, so please, if you're not already actively following us, go ahead and follow us. If you don't have Instagram, you can still see what we post. You can still search the Instagram site and see. And then if anybody has any comments, questions, anything, if they email food@PageCounty, that goes to the central office leadership of my department. And it's the best way to get immediate response if you have any questions or concerns. And I would welcome any questions or comments that you would like to ask.
Is there a map of the county that has the 50 stops on it?
I do not currently have a map created, but that is definitely something that I can work on. We have lists of the stops, but not specifically a map. But that should be pretty easy to do, and I may actually work with the county GIS people because that's something that for them is like really quick to.
Or Trans Finder, the boss routing.
Okay.
That's what I was thinking, yeah.
Okay. Yes, that's a wonderful idea. I appreciate that.
And it's the same stops every week.
So every week, yes, ma'am. So Mondays, we're typically in the Stanley region relatively. Tuesdays, we're in Shenandoah this year specifically because the library asked for us to move to a Tuesday or Thursday where they're having programs so that we could hopefully get some coordination there. And then on Wednesdays, we're here in the Luray area. And Thursdays is still part of Luray, but also goes up into the Rileyville section. And those locations are listed on our Facebook and Instagram pages. But again, I think, and those stops stay the same. So they have signs out, the signs that we showed earlier. They say Wednesdays from this time to this time. And with the addition of that second vehicle, we extended each stop. We were doing 15 minutes a stop. We're now doing 30 minutes a stop. And our evening stops are actually an hour each evening from 5:30 to 6:30. And we hope that that allows our families that may be working during the day to still be able to access.
And it's important that it's anybody 18 and under, so even if the kids aren't in school, to encourage them to go out and get the food. I mean, this, I was trying to get Kate, I don't know if she ever, my Kate, I don't know if she ever went there, but it was peanut butter and bread and raisins. And Cal loves peanut butter and bread and raisins. So I said, "Look, you don't have to go to the store and buy it. You're going to have enough of it for the week." So, well, even if the kids aren't in school, as long as they are.
Or in a public school.
Right. Any child in, and I will say, they don't even have to actually live in Page County. They have to, a child 18 and under or a guardian needs to come to one of our stops, which exists in Page County. And that's, that's the limitation. So, you know, we now have a stop at the Shenandoah Moose. So we know that there are residents of Rockingham County that live down Naked Creek, that area. If they were to come, they would be served. We don't ask for, we ask the child's first name, last name, date of birth, and initials for a parent or guardian. And that's all that we ask. And we ask that the first time. And then when you come back the next time, have you already registered? What's the child's name? And that's as easy as it is.
I think if the verbiage on that map too, if you can do it, is to say what day it is, kind of the round of time. And I think that's really something you should be sharing with supervisors. Because this is, this is big work.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Ma'am? Would you like to move so you can see the screen? You sure?
Yeah.
I guess. Is there another seat? Would you mind moving back? Thank you.
Oh, she just moved.
Yeah.
All right, Dr. Huber, RFP for demographic inadequacy study?
Yes. Good evening, members of the board and community. This is an exciting time. And I hope everybody recognizes that we've put together a brief presentation for you to talk about our demographic inadequacy study that has been ongoing. Just the three items we hope to cover in this information piece is the award of the contract for the RFP that was put out, and to talk to you a little bit about that process and what went into that, the scope of the contract that we're proposing to you this evening, and then just to talk next steps. So the firm that we have selected through the process is RRMM Architects. And there's a little bit of information there on the left-hand side for you about RRMM and their background. And then three points, just as a committee, that we felt were important to talk about this evening is the why, right? And so as you know, and as we've talked about throughout the school year, we conducted an RFP to have a demographic inadequacy study for our school system to analyze characteristics and trends of our student population and surrounding community. As you're aware, this information helps us as district leaders make informed decisions about resource allocation, facility planning, program development, and as well as many other things. Our study committee involved collaboration among district leaders. We had school board members, Ms. Alder and Mr. Painter were a part of that and served as we interviewed the firms, which we had two reputable firms that we interviewed, RRMM and Rink Inc., with RRMM being the final choice from the committee. It was a unanimous decision, and it was also the lower bid between the two firms that we looked at. But in all, we felt that RRMM was going to be the correct decision for us as a school division. So we're requesting, I'm presenting information, but we'll be requesting action on that point of the agenda this evening to award the initial contract to RRMM in the amount of $235,000, which is $15,000 less than what was appropriated free upon with the board of supervisors. And we're really, really excited about that. So moving forward, just to talk about scope with you a little bit, which is a really important part of this, and what RRMM is going to provide to us. You can see the first item is the team, which is really important as we go into this process. It's not just about looking at numbers. It's about all of the other people that we can bring to the table. So that would be our architectural firm that would lead the study. LPA would be for our MEP process, mechanical, electric, plumbing. Timmins for civil engineering, so that's everything that's in the ground that we don't ever see. Future Think would be for our demographics, and as Monstin for. Existing building evaluations as part of this process. The design team would visit all school facilities to conduct observations of existing conditions and complete an executive summary to document their findings and report back to us and to you as a board and to the public as part of this scope of work for the contract. Another piece, which is actually connected to what we were just talking about with our nutrition department, is geocoding. So they will also collect, review, and analyze demographic data to review our enrollment, future housing, and population trends as well. Energy analysis is a huge piece of this. And they also will have consultants that work with us to analyze our building's energy consumption relative to its size and type, and compare that to averages across, you know, the state and nation in terms of the buildings that we have and the energy consumption that is occurring. One thing that I wanted to make sure was brought into the record is we do have the option for a 3D building scan. It does come at an additional cost of $175,000. We realize this is not a viable option right now, but we definitely want it as a committee, and felt strongly that it should be brought into the record that this is a critical step. Because you're looking at buildings that are almost 100 years old, and your plans and blueprints from when those buildings were built to what's actually required now to do what it is that we're trying to do are not adequate. And we wanted to make sure that we discuss the fact that this 3D building scan is critically important. And what that looks like is it, and Mr. Painter, please feel free to jump in on this. It allows us to understand the feasibility of what it is that the architects want to do. And having lived this, this is critical. Because we can design the most beautiful spaces and come up with the great ideas, but if we don't understand what we currently have, we're really behind and not able to paint an accurate picture of what it is that we're trying to do. If that makes sense. So we wanted to include that as part of tonight's presentation because that 3D building scan needs to be a part of the conversation as we go down.
Does that include every school that needs a 3D scan, that one frame?
It's every school.
It would be every.
It's every building. Every building that. Every building. Would get that scan. And that's going to tell us not only what we have that you can see, but what we can't see above ceiling, right? Because as you start this process, you're going to start looking at, you know, we've got a beam that has to go here or there, but if we have a water line that's in the way or sewer line that's in the way, we're not prepared to make those decisions until we actually know what we have.
And in the long run, it saves a lot of money because we are not tearing into things we already know are going to let.
Yes. It's a proactive measure to make smarter decisions instead of reactive decisions, if that makes sense. And we wanted to include that. It's not a right-now, here thing that we need to do this evening, but we want to make sure it's in the record that we're recommending from the committee that it's an important step of the process. So next steps, and what we're looking for this evening is that the board would provide approval for us to award the contract, notify all vendors, including RRMM, that we've selected them. And they will begin work immediately. They are ready to hit the ground running. The representative that we're working with is, I think, the right decision for us as a school division. He's from a small rural county in southwest Virginia. He understands, you know, what it is that we're working with. And we felt like he's going to do a great job representing our interests. He is prepared for a final report and presentation, which to me is a fast timeline of January 2026, for all of this work. One of the things that I thought was very commendable when we interviewed him is, you know, we said, "We want all of our schools, but we also want this facility, maintenance, transportation, everything included." And he said, "Absolutely. That will be a part of this process and presentation." And then to think about after that report is issued, what are our considerations for Phase 2, which would be the building scan, which would be some of the other pieces that come next. So wanted to provide that as information, certainly answer any questions that I can.
Any questions?
I'll just add a couple of comments. I mean, we met more than an hour with both firms. So it was a great meeting, and I really believe that we should be pitching the 3D scans already, no matter what happens, just to have that kind of thing. And we are, I think the quote difference was maybe 18 to 20. So we are saving money.
We are, yeah.
Yep. We're not saving, we're just not spending as much. Yeah.
Getting a sale.
And these pictures are some examples of their work, just so you know. They're not random. I didn't just pull them off the internet. These are, that's Culpepper's Technical Center. So it's a reputable group. I've done my homework behind the scenes and talk with folks, and we certainly feel like they're the best fit for us as a group.
Thank you.
Yep.
Dr. Fox, superintendent's update?
Yes, so good evening, Board. I have just a short update for you this evening. I want to begin tonight with congratulations to the class of 2025. So what, two weeks ago? It's hard to believe. It feels like it was yesterday. But almost two weeks ago, we had two really nice, albeit indoors, but it's still very nice graduation ceremonies. So we just want to congratulate all of our students, their families, and our thank you to our staff from K to 12 who made it happen. Because kids don't just walk across the stage in their senior year. It happens all across. So thank you to all, everybody for making all of that happen. I want to congratulate Dr. Huber on his new role as superintendent. So looking forward to hearing about the great work that you're going to do.
Thank you.
And I also want to welcome Brandy Hilliard and her role as Director of Special Education. She has stepped up. And Brandy, I just want you to know, thank you for stepping up in doing. She's a little bit a month ahead of schedule for her role, but she has stepped in, and she is working diligently and hard over the last couple of weeks and will to get things right. So thank you for all that work. We appreciate it. And if you would, I'd just like to take a minute. I just want to give some thank yous as this is my last board meeting as your superintendent. I just wanted to say thank you to a few people. So if you all don't mind, and will indulge me for a moment, and I will try to keep myself in control because tonight is very bittersweet. And it sounds sort of cliche to say that, but it's been very bittersweet over the last couple of weeks because while there's a sense of relief that I am passing the proverbial baton, there's also a deep sense of sadness in that I'm walking away from such a wonderful place and wonderful people. But it's so humbling, and it's an emotional thing to think about the journey that I've been on for the past 30 years. And I'm just so grateful to the people that have walked alongside of me, those that have mentored me to help me get ready to accept this kind of position, and those that have supported me. My decision certainly marks the end of a deeply meaningful season in my life, one that spanned 30 years and one that's definitely been defined by purpose and collaboration. It's been the pinnacle of my career to serve as a superintendent here. It's been an honor to have been trusted with the oversight of this division. We're talking about millions of dollars, but more importantly, we're talking about lives. 3,000 students, 600 staff members, their families in our communities. I've taken none of that for granted, and it's truly been an honor to have been given the opportunity to do that. So as I step away, I certainly think about the challenges that we've overcome together because we've had some challenges. I look to these guys. We've had some challenges. But we've also had some really, really good things and successes that have come. So I've always believed that we're meant to be where we're meant to be. And I believe that I was meant to come here to Page County. You all have given me so much. In my life, I really consider myself to be so much richer because of my experience here. So I just want to thank everybody for welcoming not only me. We won't talk about the fair, Mr. Painter, and the 99-degree temperatures of the welcoming in Page County, but also welcoming my husband and our family here, the kind notes, the words of encouragement, and certainly the consistent support over the years. I also believe very strongly that everything has its season. My tenure has come at the right time for all of us. I think not only for Page, but for me in my life as well. And it's now time for me to turn, I say again, that proverbial baton over to Dr. Huber. So Dr. Huber, again, congratulations. I know that you're going to honor the things that we've done that have had a positive impact on this division, and I appreciate that. That I get to walk away and hand it to you, and you're not just going to throw it all away. I also know that you're going to now kick things into high gear in the next year, and that's what the division needs. They need your leadership to take it to the place where I couldn't take it. And so I know that you're going to make decisions that are for the best interest of kids, our staff, our families, and our community. Remember that you've got this. You've got amazing staff who will always have your back, literally. They're always going to be behind you, but also figuratively, they've got your back. And you also have a wonderful board that's going to. And you also have a wonderful board that's going to support you. And I'll always be cheering for you, and just know that I'll always be there to support you however I can. Ms. Chris and Dr. Johnson. You know, it's such a job. We become humans together. And I just want to thank them for their unwavering support, their tireless hard work, and their dedication to this division. We are a great division because of people like you and Paul. And I thank you for pushing through the hard days with me, for helping me see all sides of the situations. Many a day, Patty has looked at me across the table and cabinet and gone, no, just no, Dr. Johnson. And I appreciate that because I didn't have a yes team, and I didn't want a yes team. We 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 talked through, we hashed through things, and as a leader, there's nothing more important than that, and knowing that they're willing to have those conversations with you. And most importantly, I thank you all for just being staunch advocates for kids, no matter what. You're always there for kids. So thank you for your leadership, your friendship, and for helping me become a better leader and a better person. To our directors, our supervisors, and our administrators, thank you for the excellence, the talent, and the energy that you've brought to your roles every single day. You're an amazing group of people. Through the ups and the downs, you've stayed steadfast to your mission, which is kids, and you've supported teachers in the way that they need to be supported. Without you, our successes would not be measurable. So thank you for making a profound difference in my life. I will remember each of you fondly, and just know that you've made a difference in the lives of our students. You'll continue to do that, and just know how much I appreciate the constant support. To our dedicated faculty and staff, thank you. They're the heart and soul of this school division. Their passion for students and their unyielding belief in what's possible has inspired me every single day, and it's been an honor to work with every single one of them. To our students, thank you for showing me that our future is bright. I think we've seen that in the kids that sit here, but also the kids that we get to go see at different events, whether it's artistic, athletic, FFA, FCCLA, academic, other, alt head, those kids, their our future is bright. I feel relieved to know that my future, as I get older, is bright because of the kids that are coming up. It's been a privilege to work on their behalf and a privilege to see them in action, witnessing their amazing gifts and talents. To our families and our community partners, we're nothing in a school division without them. So just thank you for entrusting your children to us and to me, and for standing with us as we celebrated the good things and as we worked through the challenges together. Your support and collaboration have been critical and appreciated. I chuckled this week a little bit and last week, and I hope I'm not jinxing myself because it's going to be hot next week, but that I no longer get to make inclement weather falls out of an abundance. Had to get it in there for you.
Yeah, thank you.
And certainly to Ms. Anita Ragland, even though she's not here tonight, I just want to say publicly to thank her. She's taken such good care of me over the last four years. She's done her job, but she's done more than that. She's made sure that what I've needed has been taken care of, and she also takes care of others. So I I appreciate her beautiful spirit and her helping hand. It won't be forgotten, and as I reflect on our time together with her, I reflect on it fondly. I have no doubt that she will watch over and support Dr. Huber in the days to come in the same way. And while my family couldn't be here tonight, I want to take a moment to thank them because I can't do this without them. To my husband Reggie, who essentially uprooted his life to support my desire to be a superintendent, I'm so thankful for his sacrifice and for his love. And to our sons Joshua and Aaron, who are the pride of my my life, they've always been my biggest cheerleaders, and I thank them for being a constant source of strength for me. They've always, with Reggie, they've always supported me through the long days and the nights, through the difficult decisions, and they've celebrated the joyful milestones as well. Their patience, their love, and their belief in me has made this possible over the last four years. And to my dad and our extended family, they also deserve a thank you because without their constant encouragement and love, I wouldn't have been able to do the work that I do. I love them all dearly, and I share all of my successes with them. And lastly, to you all, the school board, thank you for taking a chance on me. Four years ago, I walked in, and you didn't know me from Adam, and you took a chance on me. And we've worked through some really, really hard days together, that's for sure, and we've also been able to celebrate some really great things together. Having six bosses was initially very daunting. You will find that out, Dr. Huber.
Thanks.
But as we grew together, we learned how to navigate with each other, how to communicate with each other, and how to make decisions with each other. We may not have always agreed, and that's okay. We shouldn't always agree. I've always shared with you that, and with anyone around the state or wherever I go, that as a superintendent, I was always so lucky to have such a great role. I see other superintendents who just feel miserable because they don't have the support of the board that I have, and I'll be eternally grateful for that. You are to be commended for the work that you do, the effort that you give, and the diligence with the way you do it. You guys ask questions. You take the time. You take my calls. I'm treasured, I've treasured getting to know each of you personally as well, and I'll reflect back on our time for sure fondly and miss you all. But thank you for your leadership, most importantly, your trust in me as we made decisions together, and for your shared vision of what our schools could be. It's been a privilege and an honor to work with you in partnership. And as I said, this work has never been about a job for me. It's always been about a calling. And I leave with an immense sense of pride in what we've accomplished together, and I leave knowing that I believe I've done what the board asked me to do when I started here. And I also leave with the belief that I've left this part of the world a little bit better than how I found it. And to everyone who's helped me do that, I say thank you. I have great hopes under Dr. Huber's leadership and these amazing people that things are bright in Page County. And just know that I'll always be rooting for you in the background and supporting you however you can. But I just wanted to take time tonight to make sure I say thank you to everybody. So thank you for giving me a few minutes to to do that, and it's a little bit longer than we anticipated, but I just want everybody to know that I appreciate you. Thank you. And I'm hoping you don't have any questions.
Thank you. Our human. And I think we're all going to have some.
Fireworks.
Last, last chance to get a dig in.
Never mind. You're here for the show.
Ms. Chris, claims for payment.
All right. Good evening, Board again. You have been provided with a claim certification where a total operating fund was $297,570.50. Food service, $56,467.81. Total expenditures, $354,038.31. Along with that, you do have the list of claims as well as several items that are retroactively being approved since we had one meeting last month and then the timing of this meeting. You also have the check registers as well, and if you have any questions, I'll do my best.
I'd like to make a motion to we approve the claims for payment as presented.
Motion by Mr. Painter and a second by Ms. Bryant to approve the claims for payment as presented.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Thank you. Dr. Huber, may I have the textbook adoption?
Yes. Another exciting moment for us is to bring for action this evening our mathematics textbook adoption. For our secondary level, it would be math space for elementary. It will be KIDM, which is aligned with our CIP assessment process. We've gone through the entire textbook adoption process with our committees, gotten feedback, and we're bringing that to you for action this evening.
I'll make a motion that we approve the mathematics textbook adoption as presented.
A motion by Mr. Painter and a second by Ms. Bryant to approve the math textbook adoption. Any question?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Ms. Chris, purchase orders over 10,000?
Yes, we have several purchase orders for your consideration this evening, first starting with the FY25 purchase orders. The first few there are using community school grant funds to purchase some furniture for our elementary school spaces and our youngest learners. The next three there are in reference to that math textbook adoption that Dr. Huber just presented, using all-in funding for the first two and then state textbook funding for the last section there. Those are the FY25 purchase orders. Then we will move to the FY26 purchase orders. They are two pages. These are the ones that you guys usually see for the July 1.
It always makes me sick.
These are our basic contracts from utilities, those sort of things that you'll see there. This is so that we can start July 1 encumbering these funds and and moving the budget along as we get started. The only one that I think on here, not that I think, that I know on here that is not a utility or contracted service there, is the 71 passenger bus using transportation local funding that the Board of Supervisors has stated that they will allocate to us. It does have to be processed now according to Mr. Corey Turner at the Bus Garage, as Sonny Maryman is guaranteeing it will at least be 12 months, if not longer. So it might even roll into a FY27 expenditure. But we're hoping if we are forced out of the gate that we can have this before the end of FY26. And if you have any questions on either FY25 or FY26, I'll do my best to answer those.
I'll make a motion that we approve the purchase orders over 10,000 as presented.
Second. A motion by Mr. Painter and a second by Ms. Bryant to approve the purchase orders over 10,000. Do we have any questions?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Hopkins?
Good evening, guys. This evening, seeking your approval to submit the 2025, 2026 consolidated application, which includes Title I, Title II, Title III, and Title IV. Dr. Fox, include these figures in the budget. We have to have a short day.
I make a motion that we approve the 2025, 2025 through 2026 consolidated grant application.
Second.
A motion by Ms. Sullivan Smith and a second by Ms. Bryant to approve the 2025, 2026 consolidated grant application.
Yes.
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 Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Huber, RFP demographic inadequacy study?
Yes, so bringing for action this evening is approval from the board to award the contract to RRMM architects for the demographic inadequacy study as presented earlier for information to the amount of $235,000.
I'll make a motion that we approve the RFP demographic inadequacy study as presented.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Painter and a second by Ms. Bryant to approve the RFP demographic inadequacy study as presented.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Dr. Fox?
Yes, thank you. Tonight, I ask for your approval to name Mrs. Tanya Miller, who will be the incoming Chief Financial Officer as a designated fiscal agent for the division beginning July 1, 2025. Typically, you all do this in January, but because we have a changing and a passing of that baton as well, we'll need your approval so she can begin her work.
I'll make a motion that we designate our new fiscal agent as Tanya Miller and be a friend.
I only have one question. You're asking for this, right? Okay, all right.
Does that mean you're going to second it?
I'll second.
So we have a motion by Ms. Sullivan Smith and a second by Mr. Painter to approve the designated fiscal agent?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Dr. Fox, superintendent's signature?
Yeah, so each year, we're required to renew with the board's approval for those who can sign reports, documents, requisitions, or other official correspondence in the absence of the division superintendent. Our current approval expires on June 30, and the new one will have to be taken care of in July. So in order for us to allow Dr. Johnson and Dr. Huber and add Mrs. Miller to sign between now and when you approve the next one, we'll do this now, tonight, which will still list me as a superintendent. Dr. Huber will bring it back to you in July. It'll have his name on it. You'll re-sign it. It'll be good to go for another year. So tonight, I ask you to approve Dr. Johnson, Dr. Huber, and Mrs. Miller as designees to sign for me in my office.
I make a motion that we approve Dr. Johnson, Dr. Huber, and Mrs. Miller to be, to approve for superintendent signatures.
Second.
A motion by Ms. Sullivan Smith and a second by Mr. Painter to approve the superintendent's signature.
Yes.
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 Dr. Fox again.
Yes, so while we'd like for this to be a surprise, it's no longer a surprise, but VSBA each year, they have a recognition program where they recognize regional school board members of the year. I would like with your support to submit Jackie Sullivan Smith as our candidate for various reasons. One, she's been serving on the board for 16 years, but also just for her dedication and her commitment to Page County students and families, that we submit her application. Has to have your formal approval documented in a board meeting. Otherwise, we would have done it to surprise her, but we will prepare that application and send it off. And Jackie, I have no doubt they'd be foolish not to select you, but we will do this, and hopefully you know how much we appreciate you and honor the work that you've done over the past 16 years. So I'm just asking for your approval to nominate Jackie Sullivan Smith for the VSBA School Board Member of the Year.
Make a motion that we nominate Ms. Jackie Sullivan Smith as the VSBA School Board Member of the Year.
Second.
A motion by Ms. Bryant and a second by Mr. Painter to nominate Ms. Jackie Sullivan Smith for VSBA School Board Member.
Yes.
No. You vote yes. Board member comments?
Well, I'm going to start. I've already said this, Dr. Fox, but I remember clearly the day that we appointed her as our superintendent four years ago. And she said then, when I came to Page County, my goal is that I will retire from Page County. You never said when, how many years, or whatever, but what we've gained in four years is phenomenal. I told the board this. And all my years as a school board member, the thing that I will cherish the most have been the opportunities to work with board members that in most cases our paths would have never crossed over the years so that, and then to be able to work with you, Dr. Fox, that's just been a very, well, I cherish the four years. And when you told us that you were going to retire, I was sad. Dr. Huber, I'm glad that you're our next step up, and I have no doubt. And as I finish my term in December 31st, I wish all the current and new members the best of luck. Remember, you're a team, and you work together. And as you said earlier, we don't always agree. That's probably a good thing, but when we leave, we still talk to each other. And some decisions are easier than others, and others, you have to collect more information, et cetera, et cetera. But even though we won't be living in Page County, this ain't goodbye. This is see you later, toodleoo. And this is one of the little sayings that she's taken a liking to, but different times in conversations, something would be said, and I'd say, whatever blows your skirt off. Enjoy your free time.
I didn't think I'd hear that tonight.
I wish it meant it was Jizo flipo. That too.
Nobody has any of these on their bingo card.
But anyway, just enjoy every minute of it. And it's going to be an adjustment because you've been going 24/7 for 40 years. And I'll say prayers for Reggie, too. But anyway, I can't begin to thank you enough, and I just wish you the very best.
And Dr. Fox, it has only been a year and a half-ish, I don't think anymore, since I had the pleasure of knowing you and working with you. And I'm glad that they took a chance on you four years ago too. I think that you have represented Page County so well. You have shown grace and class and the way that you have responded in tough situations, I think shows true leadership and the example of how Page County people need to learn to speak with each other. And I greatly appreciate that. And there are many decisions that people are not going to understand. And I encourage you to serve on local boards and come to learn what is happening and you will understand so much more. And I for one am glad that I've taken on this experience. It allows me to learn more about everything that is happening. And if you've got questions, sign up, get involved, come find out for yourself inside of the table. I'm grateful, so grateful for you and your leadership and thank you for what you have done for our division. You deserve retirement. And people do not understand the weight that a superintendent carries and I have a great respect for it and it is appreciated. Thank you.
All right.
That's what we're making for.
You came out of nowhere in the interview process, got the job. And before you took the job and signed the paper, I asked you that question you asked for this. Before you signed, I laid out, you had a hornet's nest. A lot of disgruntledness about things and there are still going to be people disgruntled even with you, you know that, that's part of leadership. The first day you got stung was unbelievable. And then, then I set you up to go to the fair. We, we can laugh about it now.
Now.
You want to come back this year?
I think if we take-
Negative 20, yes. It's 99 degrees.
I think we need to take Ms. Huber, Dr. Huber out there.
I think that would be fender.
This board and yourself have been on TV a lot. I've been on Fox News in DC. I got calls from Mexico and China and India and Canada asking me, is that you on the Tough times. Through that, we've got accreditation in two extra schools. Victory. I hope you hold on to a lot of it. There's been times, Page County Technical Center, we've had additions to that. That, that program is thriving. And a lot of our schools are thriving. Still have our challenges. I can say this without any reservation, you gave more than you got. You got a lot, but you gave more than you got. And there's a fine line between being a friend and being a board member. And you got to tread lightly on that, like I'll have to start my messages, okay, this is coming from a pastor and a friend. You're working too much. The stress is starting to show. And it comes from a school board member, I don't agree with this, right? But you gave more than you got. And I think that's one thing you should be very proud of. And I think it's a great example for all of us. There was times when you would go on vacation and I would get emails from you and I would text Reggie and copy you and say, take her laptop, ship it to 861 Battle Creek Road and she can pick it up when she gets home. Reggie will be my friend for her life. He's a sweet man and he gave a lot too. When I was a little kid, I used to watch Monday Night Football and it was Howard Cosell, Frank Gifford, I think, Don Meredith. And at the end of the game, when the game was over, Don Meredith would sing a song. Turn out the lights, the party's over and you're giving something up. And I wish you well in your future. I wish Dr. Huber well and the new staff. We have a lot of newness. But we're better off because you gave more than you got.
I'm going to try.
You can do it.
Tonight's a little bittersweet for me too. As we say goodbye to Dr. Fox, we want to not only recognize the incredible work and dedication she has brought to our school division, but also congratulate her on her well-deserved retirement. Dr. Fox really has been a guiding light for our schools, a champion for our students, a steadfast advocate for educators and public education in general. Over the years, she's faced challenges with unwavering determination and has always kept the best interest of our students, the forefront of every decision. Under her leadership, we've witnessed significant advancements in our educational programs and a strengthened sense of community, which I think you've heard from, from everybody that spoke. She's fostered an environment where innovation and collaboration thrive, allowing both educators and students to reach their fullest potential. As she prepares to embark on this new chapter of her life, we want to take a moment to reflect on the legacy that she leaves behind. The impact of her work will resonate for years to come, shaping the lives of countless students and the future of our community. There are people that come into your life that have a, leave a profound mark. For me personally, in this season of my life, Dr. Fox is that person illustrating that leadership is not defined by where you come from, but by the impact that you make. I always told my kids that no matter where you are or what you're doing, just leave it better than you found it. And Dr. Fox has done just that at Page County Public Schools. I wouldn't have wanted to serve, and I don't think I was meant to serve as chair with anyone else. It really has been enough. Dr. Fox, on behalf of our, the entire school board, our staff, students and parents, we thank you for your unwavering commitment, your visionary leadership and your passion for education. We wish you all the best as you enjoy this journey filled with relaxation, hopefully. Mr. Painter will make sure of that. Adventure and time with loved ones. You will always be a part of our Page County organization. Now, we can have that motion.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Painter and a second by Jackie Sullivan-Smoot.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah.